I'm going to call the meeting as zoning board of appeals to order for our monthly meeting in August. I would ask that anyone in the room that has an electronic device telephone or whatever, please shut it off or put it on silence. I'm going to read a letter from the governor relative to type of operation that we have tonight with attendance here in the room. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general order chapter 30A and 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the August meeting, public meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be open to the public. However, the public and all applicants are encouraged to participate remotely. Our board members tonight, my member Steve Bernard, alternate Doris Smith, who is filling in for Chief Michael Williams, member Craig Pena, member Steve Leanos, myself, Chair Kenneth Gallagher. His zoning enforcement officer is Mr. James Wolf, clerk of the board and also the building inspector. Our recording secretary is Beth LaCombe, and we will have one alternate member tonight that will sit in on one case, and that will be Bob Bladgett. We have one case tonight that has been withdrawn prior to the start of the meeting. And this case will not be heard tonight. There is no date in the future for this case, so it will be re-advertised, and that is petition number 2050, the petition of Ross Messina, R.J. Messina Incorporated, 127 Liberty Street, Brockton, Mass. for a variance from section 27-39.9 and 2748 to construct and operate a small business unit complex in a C7 zone located at 166 East Ashland Street. So that case will not be heard tonight. If you're here for that case, it will not be heard. The way the meeting will run is I will call a petition. The petitioner or the presenter will come to the podium up front and present the case to the board. After the presentation has been made, I will open it up for the board for any questions that they may have concerning the facts that have been given to us by the petitioner. Following that, I will then open it up for public discussion. I will ask for anyone that wants to speak in favor of the petition. Then I will close that, open it for anyone that wants to speak in opposition. I will close that, and then I will open it up for deliberations by the board. At that point, the board will actually deliberate, a motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. That will be done after each case. For the five-member board, in order for a case to pass, we need four affirmative votes. So a vote of five to nothing, the petition will pass. A four to one vote, it will pass. A three to two vote, it will not pass. We had discussed tonight of elected chief, I'm going to delay that until our next meeting, so the regular board is here to vote on that. So we will not be voting on that tonight. All of the visitors that are in the hall here tonight, we would appreciate if you would continue to wear your mask while you're sitting in the chambers. And for anyone that's going to come forward to make a presentation, we will allow you to remove your mask to make the presentation, but we ask you to restore the mask as soon as you've finished your presentation. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to withdraw prior to the start of the meeting? Seeing none. All right, I think I hit everything I need to hit. The first case before us tonight is number 20-48, the petition of Elizabeth Kelleher, 107 Guilde Road, Brockton, Mass. for a variance from section 279 to construct a new home on a newly subdivided lot seeking relief from side setbacks and frontage in an I-1C zone located at 111 Guilde Road. Please give your name to the clerk.
Elizabeth Kelleher. Good evening.
Pardon me?
Is that okay?
No, we're just deliberating whether we should put that behind the camera so those at home can see it.
Yes.
Why don't we try that? This will be our first test case tonight.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so along with several neighbors here in favor of the project, a variance was granted unanimously by the zoning board in June of 2018. Unfortunately, as
Please step forward, come closer.
The podium is, I'm sorry, the podium here.
Okay, hold on just a second, we're going to do another test run. You've got to get that a little closer. Move this a little closer here. That might echo a little bit more. Give us a test, one to five.
Not good, no good.
We lost it. Okay, now we got it. Yep.
Along with several neighbors here in favor of the project, a variance was granted unanimously by the zoning board in 2018. Unfortunately, as we were pushed back, the experience was on my part and we were fired. We have success, we have credit to the property, which is right here, received our D and R statement, we have guilt, now fully funded. We are seeking the safety of the zoning ordinance 29-7 for the 11-foot and the 50-feet. Also, please, definitive subdivision, which is still currently active, due to the side steps, we're putting place the abutting property at 104, which I am treated in force. I also encourage there to be some construction around the corner at 45, also originally residential zone, it's been successfully subdivided and then identical homes. I plan to construct more style homes. However, ours will have more and more particular landscape in the front, since one of these homes has been converted and that way it will be upgraded. We plan to begin construction, our hardship is with the pandemic, it was unable to obtain permits to begin construction. I also have a letter from the neighborhood of the entire project, who's going to be here today, need a letter, I have it. And thank you for having a question.
Questions from the board?
Chairman, this is Doris Smith. I have an echo on my end.
Terrible. Yep, mine is too.
Doris, can you hear? I do hear, but it's coming in like, it's repeating halfway through each word. I just wanted to notify the board.
Doris, can you hear me?
I can hear you, and there is no echo.
Okay, this, this petition was before us some time ago, and it was approved, and as you heard the petitioner tonight, it got delayed, so the timeframe ran out. So that's why they're back to us again with pretty much the exact same plan that they had previously, that was previously approved. So I have a question of the petitioner. Is this the same dwelling that we approved the last time you were here?
Yes.
And there's a maximum of three bedrooms?
Yes.
And there's been an agreement with the petitioner or the butler, I should say, for access on one side of the property?
Yes.
Is that, is that new? Was that with the last one? I don't remember that being with the last one.
I did not respect that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I did not respect that at the last meeting.
Okay, so that, that's new, okay. And the other thing that I would want to bring to your attention is that if this was approved, that the driveway would have to go in the position that you show on this plan, and the green space as shown on the plan would have to remain. In other words, you cannot black talk the whole front driveway for
I can.
Okay, so the same hardship you had before is what you have on this one? What's all set? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Please come forward and give your name to the clerk.
Joseph Doherty, where the neighbors, my wife and I own the house adjacent to where Elizabeth wants to build. We've been in support of the plan the whole time, so we just want to be here to support her again.
Eric, number 115?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wants to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of, members of the board, Jeff Thompson, Ward Five City Counselor. I was on this board last time Ms. Kelleher presented her petition. I remember all of us at that time commending Ms. Kelleher on the professionalism of her presentation, and so at that time, we did approve her petition. As she stated before, the reason she was unable to begin this project was because of the onset of COVID. That delayed her getting basically shovels in the ground here. And so at that time, it was a good petition, supported by the neighbors, a good plan that's going to build a house that is not too big for the lot. I highly recommend a favorable, favorable recommendation for this petition, and I look forward to this house being added to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else here wants to speak in favor? Close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition?
I gotta do that every time? Oh boy. All right, I closed that portion of that. Anyone wanting to speak in favor? Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Are there any other public officials that want to speak on the issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. I'm going to open it up now for deliberations from the board. The last time we granted this, there were two stipulations. One was that the driveway is to be placed as shown on the plan, and the green space shown on the plan will not be reduced. Yes?
I remember, I remember this very clearly, I was actually driving by the property today. I remember seeing this at a number, at a number of meetings between planning and zoning, and I was, I was wondering what, what had happened, and you gave a good explanation. And I, I was in favor of this before, especially because of all the support you had from the neighbors. I'll be, I'll be in support of this again.
No, so many more, want to make a motion?
Motion to grant.
Motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Leanos?
Yes.
Mr. Pena?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's a five, is your own favor.
Okay, the vote is five in affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted. Thank you.
I'm thinking next, next, next month, we do it fully and soon, some of these people, some of the members can stay home, as long as we have a couple of us here that will cut down all these echoes.
Echo is terrible.
Yeah, because we have so many of them posted together.
Did you wipe down the?
She did.
Okay. Could you do me a favor and just close that door? So we don't get a lot of echo. You can leave it just ajar, that's great, thank you. The next petition is 20-49, the petition of Michael Keith, here of A American Investments, 539 A South Street, he strained him mask, or rain hair mask for a variance from section 279 to construct a 28-by-44 ranch that was previously granted but had expired in an I-1C zone located at 20 Charlotte Street. Please identify yourself.
I'm going to speak up.
You're going to speak up?
Yes.
Just on the other occasion, this was another petition that had come before us and was approved, signed right now, and a petition was checked before us.
Yes. So I'm here before you want to, variance that was granted in 2000, November of 2017, I believe, and we had two years to perform. We did split up the property, and it's been sold. And I had some medical issues in 18, which took a year and a half to resolve, and this kind of went on the back burner. So what I'm looking for now is to be able to move forward with this project with no changes.
This is a variance that you're requesting again, will you tell us about the hardship with the property?
Me? What was that?
The hardship with the property.
I actually had representation that did this before for me, so I'm just standing up. So I really didn't know what he had. Oh, it was hardship with the
So
I don't understand, that's right there.
So the hardship that you're looking for tonight is basically the same hardship that was presented the last time?
Yes.
Okay, and we have that on record, but nothing has changed on that, though?
Correct.
All right, the one thing that has changed is the street. Can you tell us what's going on with the street?
I'm going to put a 24-foot roadway with two 12-inch cape cord berms. I'm not going to change anything to do with the water or sewer, and that will be performed also when I go forward with this also. I'm going to go in front of them, I believe, Thursday.
So you have been before planning, laid out this?
Yes, I've been approved for both planning and zoning, yes. And I had a time limit of two years, but it lasts because of medical issues that I was taking care of.
Okay, the last time we granted this I have to keep remembering hitting that button. The last time we granted this, there were some stipulations that were involved relative to water not running onto adjacent properties
Correct, correct.
And building the street to the standards of the requirements of the city of Brockton. So those will still stand if this is approved tonight. Okay. Any questions from the board? None? Close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Nobody on the line? Seeing none, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition?
Right over here.
for the past 10 and a half years.
I'm with you.
Yes, but the vacant lot that we're talking about, actually, it was a surprise to me that this had been before planning, was my understanding that I would have been notified and had an opportunity to speak. I think it'd be a surprise to my other neighbors as well. I never got notification of that, so that's a surprise to me. So my concern, what I would like for people to take into consideration is similar to what had been discussed here before, and that is the capacity of Charlotte Street. For those who have seen Charlotte Street, it is a dirt road on a hill. I think the widest right now, maybe around 10 feet. We currently, you know, sort of know each other well on that street. There are times that I have to back out of the road to let somebody else in. Overflow parking happens on Pinehurst Street, which we also share with, you know, neighbors and two new housing houses that were built there within the past two years. So when people have a lot of parties, it becomes very crowded around that area. You know, the, the rain runoff has been an issue currently right now, and I understand the plan is to pave that. My concern is that when you pave a street like that, you know, you make things faster, and there currently is no drainage at the bottom of that street. Currently, the neighbors at the bottom of Pinehurst actually shovel dirt from Charlotte to clear, to clear that area because just the runoff. I'm also concerned about, you know, in building a new house, you know, that house will be above me, you know, so everything not just comes down the street, but also will come onto my property. I already had somebody come up to me, I was outside working one day, and asked me if they could put the utility pole on my property. And I'm like, no. You know, so these are like concerns that I have. I don't even know what that would even look like to go 24 feet when, you know, it's my house, then you have a median with trees, then you have a person who owns property on the other side of Pinehurst. I mean, are we talking about removing all the green space to make room for a road? I, I just, you know, so, yeah, I'm, thank you, I was, you know, again, shocked to hear that it had gone through planning and nobody, I know nobody around there attended, like, I thought that I would have the opportunity to speak about this. So those are, those are my concerns, what that would look like. He just handed me this, I don't know, somebody can interpret this for me. I don't know what that is, but like I said, I've been there for 10 and a half years, you know, it's a, it's a very unique setting, if anybody's been up there, you know, and we love our area, all the neighbors around it. You know, I'm just concerned somebody come in wiping it out, and then, you know, and the damage from the rain, and it just, so that's, that's, that's my concern, those are my concerns. And I know that there were accommodations that were made before, a lot of them had to do with getting the planning approved, and it sounds like they already have. And I don't know what that was going to look like. And I don't know why anybody would be asking me to put a utility pole on my property.
Let's go see, you want to show her this plan? Have you seen the plan?
First time. So this is, this is the high line? We're not on that street.
Is that going to be on this side? Strip of grass, I don't know if that's on the north side or south side. Is that going to be on this side? Strip of grass, so there's going to be 11, they're going to be leaving an 11-foot strip of grass on this side. Looks like there's going to be about, let's say, a 5-foot strip, 3-foot on abutting your, your property here. So we're going to have the berms, which are
So what's the button?
So it can't influence, right, so it's like 300 feet grass, and then straight, and 11 feet of grass over there.
But I'll be coming.
And then, no water is going to show over here, that's a cheap part of the water. Oh, where's, where's that being? But the road will not, it is that out, it's going to come down.
Is there rain?
That may be something that will help that on the city side.
If there's rain there, that, that may be going to get flooded.
To the city and to the area.
They're going to get flooded.
Does this require another 800?
Do people notice, get notified in meetings, right? I got notified for this and never.
Have we answered all the questions? We need to move on. I'll catch you in a minute. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the hearing. We got one? Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the hearing. Is there any public officials that wanna speak on this issue?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Thompson, Board 5, City Councilor. So as a City Councilor, I have multiple responsibilities in a case like this. The city does have an interest in increasing our residency base and also our tax base by building quality housing in Brockton. I've been to the lot, I saw that it fits all of the setback requirements, both side, front, and rear setbacks. This is, I believe, a lot that is screaming out for some development. But I also share Holly's concern regarding runoff. This is a dirt road that will, that she's basically at the bottom of. I live about a block away, almost two blocks away from this area. I travel down Pinehurst Street often during heavy storms. Holly is right that there's a bunch of dirt that is, that is laid at the bottom of, at Pinehurst, at the bottom of Charlotte. Looking at the plan, I see there is some plan to address runoff, to pave this street, which I believe it definitely needs, and that there will be some direction of the water away from the residences onto Pinehurst. My concern, and this is something I can bring up at the Planning Board, and Craig, hopefully you would have some say here, what does this water do when it reaches Pinehurst? We gotta make sure that it is directed, you know, into a sewer system or off the street. I don't wanna substitute one problem for another. And so I'm, as my capacity as a City Councilor, I'm neither for nor against. I just wanna make sure that if we do do a development in this area, that the neighbors, in the abutting neighbors' concerns are addressed, and that is water runoff due to the grade of the street and, you know, and the position of the houses below it. So I just wanna take, I just want you all to take that in mind when you deliberate and decide. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close that hearing, I'm gonna open it up for discussion from the board.
Chairman?
Yes.
Well, I'm looking at the blueprint, and I believe there's... There is two utility poles designated to be put on that street. Was the question answered?
My recollection is, the last time this came before, Edison Pole that was placed on the street was placed in the wrong location. It needs to be relocated. So, when she mentioned about somebody come to relocate a pole, once this, if it's approved and the street is laid out, that pole will be put in its proper location.
Thank you so much.
So, the last, the last time this came before us, we put several stipulations on this. One was that there was no increase with current runoffs. The roof drainage was underground storage. There was no... See, without the street being completed, no more than through now at the Planning Board, there has been an agreement that the street is going to be a 24-foot wide street with Cape Cod berm on each side. So that should alleviate the problem of all the dirt washing down the street. So those were the stipulations that were placed on it, and it is gonna come back before planning again to clean up any of those loose details that we heard about tonight. You can carry that back to the Planning Board. Any other discussion on the board? Yes.
I'm in agreement that a lot of, a lot of the issues that the neighbor brought up, and we do listen, and I think a lot of the issues we brought up will be taken care of in the course of the project. This was, this was approved before, under, under some strict stipulations to, to keep an eye towards, keep, keeping, keeping in, in interest, keeping your interest at heart, making sure that your yard and your house isn't flooded and that the street is brought up to our standards, so you won't have to back down the street for someone else to come in, come down the street. With that, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second.
There is no other discussion.
Second.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the maker of the motion has agreed to put the same stipulations on it with the last time that this was granted. So motion's been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The vote is five, none in the negative, and petition is granted. Thank you. Okay, the next petition is 20-50, which has been withdrawn. The next petition after that is petition 20-51, the petition of Robert R. Pellegrini Jr., attorney for ARI Struck and Sheila Struck Trust, Steve, 63 Main Street, Suite 1, Bridgewater, Mass, for a variance from Section 27-9 and 27-36 to convert the vacant building into one unit, three-bedroom, one bathroom, 880 square foot residential dwelling unit on a non-conforming lot in an I-3 zone located at 4 Track Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board. My name's Rob Pellegrini. This is for 4 Track Street. The plan is 66, plot is 17. Not sure how well you can see from there, but this is what the lot looks like on the assessment map. I have with me the owner, Harry Struck, the trustee of the trust, and Manny Piva, who prepared most of these plans. Really, what, what we're trying to do in a nutshell here is get your approval in order to use a vacant building, which has been on the site, the site was constructed about 1900. It's shown here, it's a sort of long rectangular building that goes basically from front to back. This is track over here, this is foster here. Okay, so if you're driving past on the street, you're seeing this is the vacant building here. As I always would, I went, met with the planner and Mr. Futh as well. And originally, we weren't sure about the property line and whether or not these, these two structures here, the... This is a bulkhead, and these are stairs. We weren't sure whether or not those approached on the city property, they don't. When we had the survey done, it's clearly on the property. So this, once again, this building is vacant. There's a property right next to it, which is four units now. It's currently occupied completely for family, and there are four vehicles, you know, contributing to parking on the street here as well. So I believe what we needed for relief is from, for the lot size for Article 4, Section 27-9, the lot's currently non-conforming. And obviously, with the addition of the unit, it would become less conforming. The unit, by the way, the proposed unit is a three-bedroom, which is kinda nice. And, and also to alleviate some of the parking issues, we're proposing to reduce, to cut off the rear of this currently vacant building, which equates 182 square feet, and that's gonna open up this whole yard area. So if you look at the parking plan, we're, you know, suggesting that two vehicles would be able to fit in here, so the current situation would be improving as, you know, we're gonna assume that the census and what's there currently, there being, you know, an average of one car per residential unit, you know, that staying the same would be pulling another car off the street, which is a potential bonus. So in addition to 27-9 for minimum lot size, there's two more. One is for parking, that's the same article actually. And then finally, it's a conversion, so that's Article 4, Section 27-36. Once again, and B1 of that article says there shall not be more than the maximum number of dwelling units that are permitted and on the lot. So again, you know, for the same reason as I previously suggested, that is not, not conforming. Obviously, the shape and topography of the lot with this building, which has been there since 1900, doesn't allow for any other use of that building. And I would view it as a, you know, a actual positive that it would be used and that we could potentially be pulling, you know, at least one, probably two cars off the street parking. And I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, once again, I have Manny Piva, who has prepared the plans, and the owner as well, who could speak to any questions you have about the property.
Thank you. Questions from the board? So this is, excuse me, is my muted? Mr. Bennett? Mr. Bennett? No question? Yes, Mr. Bennett? This is a, pretty much a postage stamp sized lot, it's been that way since, for 120 years.
You are correct, Mr. Bennett.
How much more postage than that? I mean, what else could be done other than what it's...
You're right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We even, the two, I mean, buildings to see if you could just join it, and they're built at separate elevations, so there, there is no way to do that. So there'd be no way to use that.
You're right. The street today, the condition of the street is invisible, and that's the issue with the city that really can't be revealed here. It's a very, very tight neighborhood, and we understand that.
Yes.
What are you gonna do for rubbish removal for this site?
We were just talking about that, Mr. Chairman. You're right, one of the pictures even shows that, that currently the trash barrels, especially in the photo, are sort of strewn across it. There's two options, one could be to, okay, one could be to line them up here. You get the stop speed, and... Okay, yeah, that's actually a pretty, pretty good location. So this would be on the southerly property line here, and Manny's kinda drawing in where you should leave them. Yeah, sure, I can turn it around for you. So the chairman was asking where these could be placed. There's actually in the, sort of, this line up here, but there isn't anything here right now. Currently, that's a practical place to put them. So rather than stretching them across the, what, here, there would be a space there. Would the board like me to show you what I just showed the buyer? Okay. Oh, yeah. Currently, there is building here. For a well-known part of the model, whatever, here, along the street.
So the current building that's there is four units, how many bedrooms?
Are they?
12?
Two beds.
So we got four units with 12 bedrooms, and now the proposal is to do five apartments with 16, 15 bedrooms.
It's currently, the total of eight. So it's two bedrooms per unit. There's eight here now. The two additions would add three, so you'd be going from eight to 11.
Okay, sure.
Bear with me here. So the building that's there now has four apartments, and each one of those apartments has two bedrooms. The proposal is to convert this building into one additional apartment with three bedrooms. That's the proposal. And the proposal is to take part of the building off in the back to make a spot where we can put rubbish, and you're telling us that you're gonna be able to put two vehicles off of the street on the property.
That's correct, sir.
That doesn't do anything for the current parking for the current building, no change in that.
That is correct, other than that it's true that the apartment, you know... One car per apartment, then by adding places for two, then that's what I was suggesting earlier, that if this holds true, then we would be making it slightly better.
Oh, God, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Is, I'm gonna close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? In favor? Okay. Anyone wants to speak in favor? Nobody on the screen? Okay, I'm gonna close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? Okay, the only thing I would ask, if there are multiple people that wanna speak, if you can confine your remarks so that we're not repeating the same thing over and over again, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I'm assuming there's a camera here where you guys can see me better, yes? Go, I got, just something to read, I got photos as well. We're all current residents of Foster Street, and we're writing, you know, in opposition. Because there's currently not enough parking. Because there's currently not enough parking for the current residents in the neighborhood. Current tenants consistently park on the current actual sidewalk, which makes it hard for me to get anywhere I get to go on the street.
Where are you living, across the street?
I live at number 29.
We're there.
Across the street?
Yeah, we're on the opposite side, two houses up.
Are you?
Trash is constantly overflowing, rodents, raccoons, and skunks. During the winter, especially during the parking bans, all the vehicles are left on the street. And when the plows come down, they all just get plowed in. And then sometimes there's tickets and sometimes there isn't. And then, as he had mentioned earlier about Track Street, sidewalks are eroding away and the street is just trashed. Foster Street finally got done after, you know, 50 years of being in disrepair. Using the C Click Fix website, I've got several issue numbers here, ones that were made about that particular property. And then I've got several photos here. I don't know if there's a way for you guys to actually see them. As far as the parking stuff, is there a camera on this thing or does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, so you saw that one. And then there's this one particular car at the bottom. It keeps parking both ways and on the sidewalk up against the building. If you saw on the first one, you can actually see they're actually on the sidewalk in front of the parking meters. They just drive on it and park there and leave it there. Several of those have been, you know, ticketed over the course. And then, as to the trash issue, I don't know if you guys can see these?
Yeah.
And then this was this past Wednesday. And then the pictures of Track Street, just the street the way it is and the sidewalk eroding away and all that. I tried emailing this to the ZBA email and it got kicked back. So I had to send it to the building department. I hope they received it. Yes, okay.
We got it.
Okay. Wasn't sure, may not always sort of yourself.
The three parking spots that he had of his photos, actually, happens about one, two, and three are in the street. And there's actually no parking. There is a sign posted, "No parking." And they're trying to say that that's their parking on the street.
Right, there's actually only one spot there because if you park right on the curb, on the corner, you can't see when you come through Track Street on to Foster, because they're parked within 20 feet of the curb. The no parking sign actually just got replaced. They actually knocked it down. I have a picture of all the cars parked there without the no parking sign. Which was in that email as well.
Okay, all set?
It's been an ongoing issue. We feel that by adding another apartment, a pre-bedroom apartment, it's only going to make it more congested, more parking issues with the snow and the trash. So we are definitely against it.
So your big issue is just parking in the trash?
Yeah, there's no, there's no place to park for the current occupants of that building. And the trash is overflowing.
Very good. You all set, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
May I, may I address some of those comments?
No, no, that part's done. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? If not, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. I'm going to open up the deliberations from the board.
Auntie, this is the recent on the phone.
Hold on, just a minute. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Okay, I'll reopen it again for opposition. Go ahead, give us your name and address.
My name is Anna Cruz.
Speak up loudly. You can take the mask off if it's more comfortable to speak.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anna Cruz. I reside at 38 Foster Street. And another issue that opposing, there's no stop sign there. So when everybody is trying to get out of Foster, Track Street, to get onto Foster Street, they can't see beyond the cars. And it, a couple of times, I personally have almost gotten in an accident because people are just screeching out of that street because nobody can see beyond the cars that are parked on Foster Street for that street, that corner. Also, I've witnessed as well that there's never been any shoveling in the sidewalks on that property, be it on Track Street or being on Foster Street. And sometimes that I have to walk because of medical issues. I have to walk in the street, which allows me to have the possibility of getting hit by a vehicle.
All set?
All set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have somebody? You're all set?
Mr. Chairman, we're attempting to have Andy on the new consults.
I can't do it.
We're trying to do that, Andy, unmute himself. Mr. Chairman, Andy Morris at 58 Forest Street is opposed to it because of the parking and adding the bedrooms in what adds to the street.
Mr. Chairman?
58 Foster.
I still can't get it.
58 Foster, 58.
His issue is parking?
His issue is parking, adding the bedrooms, and more cars to the street.
Okay, so Andy at 58 has issues with parking and additional bedrooms. Mr. Bennett, all set? Is the old man?
There's nothing else, Chair.
So he's done. He simply done. Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. I am going to open up a discussion from the board.
Foster Street, I believe, has, in recent years, have been repaved, improving the, the street tremendously, increasing the value of homes up and down. That, that street's become very, very attractive from, from the declining situation. However, going from west to east, down to, down to Warren Avenue, when you approach Track Street and you reach the location of the building that's in, in question, it becomes a, a problem of density. Density of people and a, an overwhelming density of automobiles, taking away from the upgrading of, of the street. As you approach that end of the street, you have people coming out of Track Street, coming out of the apartments, apartment buildings across the street, and people exiting and entering the, the business at the, at the corner. I have a real problem with more people, more cars being added to that end of Foster Street. Track Street and Foster Street intersection has always remained a problem, including the sidewalk across from this building on Foster Street that is, that has always been in a eroding situ, situation for years. So I'm, I'm not in, not in favor of adding people or cars to that location.
No, my questions have been answered by the, thank you.
Okay, Stephen?
In, in response to this, this, this property, I mean, it's, it's been this way since 1900. It's a 120-year-old residential property that, what else is there to do other than, other than ask a, a owner to keep it vacant and make it, make, just make it a drain? I, I sympathize very much with the congestion of the neighborhood, the congestion, the density of the buildings, the people, and the, and the, and the vehicles. But I don't think it's fair for us to ask a property owner just to, when there's no other use for a building, just to keep it vacant. Yep.
I personally, personally, also have a huge effect.
That the size of this structure is only about 880 feet. We're looking to put a three-bedroom unit in there with a kitchen, a bathroom, and a living room. Even though we're looking at possibly putting two spaces in the backyard, I don't see how that is going to make anything any better relative to the four units that are currently there. The whole lot is only 3,900 square feet. And for a unit of this size, we need about 12,000 square feet. We had a very similar situation two weeks ago where a separate building was located on the same plot, where they tried to put another apartment unit in. And this is pretty much identical to that. We know the building's been there for a long time, but I don't think this is the best use for that building. I think the neighbors down there are putting up with a lot of grief with what's going on in the house that's there now relative to parking. I have looked at the site numerous times, both during the daytime and at night. And there is cars packed on the sidewalk, they're packed everywhere down there. I don't see this as enhancing the neighborhood. And I, I cannot support converting this into another living unit. What can be done with it, I don't know. Maybe it should be torn down and make packing for the four-unit building that's there now. But it certainly is not going to enhance the neighborhood by adding another three-bedroom unit in an 880-square unit. That's all I got to say. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to grant with the hopes that it fails.
Is there any stipulations?
I don't have any stipulations, but I would accept the stipulations that make sense from other board numbers.
Okay, we did not put any stipulations on there. Let's, one, one motion.
Motion to make is seconded to grant. Okay, we put any, we were told that they were going to tear down the back end of the building to make more room in the back of the building. But that's about all that I've heard here. And they agreed to do that.
Unfortunately, if, if you can hear me, you're, I'm having problems with your, hearing you. You're, you're breaking up, so I didn't have, I didn't hear, hear you.
The one thing that he did mention in his presentation was that they intended to tear the south end of the building down in order to extend the driveway, so that they could put two vehicles in the driveway. Other than that, we heard nothing, other than that, as a stipulation. And he agreed to do that. That answer your question? Mr. Bennett, answer your question?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion to make and second it to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Bennett? Yes, yes. Miss Smith?
No.
Kevin?
No. No.
Mr. Chairman, is it one in favor and four against?
Okay, the vote is four on the affirmative, one in the negative. The next petition is 20-52, the petition of Senior Living Acquisitions LLC, 857 Coast Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, for a variance from Section 2732, 2748, 2753, and 54, 2710 Subsection 2, to be allowed to construct and operate an assisted living facility seeking relief from building height, number of stories, floor-to-area relation, and parking in a C5 zone located at Plot 14 Christie's Drive.
Mr. Chairman, with the board's permission, my name is Attorney at Law with Offices at 48 North Pearl Street in Brockton, Massachusetts. And I have the pleasure to represent Senior Living Acquisitions LLC. Mark DiPico is here, and he's here with his team that will be hopefully addressing the board and explaining the project. But I'd like to lead it off and suggest that I think this is a good news story for the city of Brockton. Everyone here on the board is familiar with the Christie Way area. It's developed nicely. It's in an economic opportunity zone. It is, interestingly enough, in a C5 zone, which basically has professional offices, but it has, how would you say, evolved from other uses, which included a major hotel, which include another assisted living facility, and basically a daycare facility area. So what we have in a C5 zone is, interestingly enough, a zone that allows hospitals, it allows daycare facilities, and it allows nursing homes, but does not allow the same companion use, which is an assisted living facility. Nursing homes, of course, have residential components. So the developer here seeks to be allowed to construct and operate a 116-bed facility with 55 parking spaces in a vacant lot of land. It tried to acquire land next door with the Shields family to, order to expand the facility, which goes to one of the variances, which is the height variance. But they were unable to do so. So, and I, and Mr. Chairman, if it's of use to the board, I have the exact same plan that was filed with the board, but it's in color. So it might stand out for the board if they, if the, oh, this one. Oh, this one is the site plan, Judge, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. But if I may, the interesting part of this specific user is that he has a model, which he will explain, which goes toward to moderate and middle income families in the very high cost of congregant care. It's an exciting model. It's one that I think would be great for the city of Brockton because statistics have shown that there is going to be a huge need for these facilities within the next 20 or 30 years nationally. It's going to be roughly a $15 million project. And it's going to take a vacant piece of land into a, an exceptional value commercial structure that will bring benefits to the tax based system of the city of Brockton with a commercial use. And it, in fact, it is, is going to utilize basically the entire 59,000 square feet of the lot. So basically what we're seeking from this board is relief by way of allowing us to have a variance for the use, which isn't specifically utilized under our zoning bylaw, but is, as I said before, is touched on very closely by companion uses that are in fact allowed in the C5 zone. Secondly, for the board to submit and agree to the numbered parking, which is roughly a point eight per bed for the facility at 55 spaces, because our, our table of uses for parking does not identify the use necessary. However, when the board makes that consideration, none of the occupants of the assisted living facility in fact drive cars in this particular model. And lastly, it would be a request for a variance for the number of stories and building height, as well as maximum floor area. And basically, because of the size of this lot, they are not able to do their model program within the constraints of the property as it exists. That's why they attempted to acquire more land from the Shields family, but were in fact unsuccessful. So it required from a four story to a five story building, which led to the variances that are before. So I would suggest that I'm going to bring Mark on, and I'd like, I'd like the board to consider listening to their exciting experience. They're very well funded developer and very experienced in the field. Mark?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark DePaqueal from Senior, I'm the principal of Senior Living Acquisitions. What we're Sure, D E capital P as in Peter, E C O L. So what, we're out of Connecticut, and what we're doing is expanding these, what we call mid-market assisted living and memory care throughout New England. Being in the industry for about eight years, there's a huge, there's an incredible growing demographic of the elderly because of the baby boomers and their parents. And this is a population that is, will be expanding exponentially. But there's a big need for affordable assisted living. A lot of the luxury affordable assisted living communities are great, but they're very high priced and they only serve the tip of the iceberg. So what we've done is modified a very successful programmatic design where it's about 30% less than the luxury assisted living, but has the same amenities. This is called mid-market, and it's basically for the middle class. They're, they're kind of caught in between. It's not subsidized. If you don't have any money at all, you could go to subsidize assisted living that the state provides. If you have a lot of money, you can go to the luxury assisted living, but it's the middle. So what happens is these families get stuck where they can't afford it. And typically, the daughter or the children try and take care of the parents as best they can, hire some part-time help, whatever. So we've, we're part of solving the problem for assisted living at a relatively affordable level. It's private pay, it's fully taxable, but it's, it runs about 30% less. It's a benefit to the community because obviously it takes care of mom and dad, grandma and grandpa. There's no traffic, there's no impact to the school systems or services of the town. So the town basically receives property taxes without having to spend money and services. The other thing we've done is this this COVID, the pandemic situation, of course, is terrible. But it's allowed us because we're just starting to develop these properties. We just had our first one approved in Bristol, Connecticut, zoning approved in Nogentuck, Connecticut. We've got several in various stages of entitlements. But because of the pandemic, we're able to modify or design somewhat to make it pandemic resistant. So what we're doing is we're installing an expensive ultraviolet air handler in the building. So all of the air goes through this UV mechanical system and eliminates 99.9% of the viruses and bacteria. We have negative pressure in the room, so the air sucked out. It doesn't stay stagnant. We have telehealth, so the, the older people don't have to go out and see a doctor, wait in a waiting room, be exposed to the elements. They can see their doctor right in the wellness room, just like, just like here. And a lot of the treatment can be done through, through FaceTime. We have remote visitation. So there's, each room has a smart TV, a large smart TV with a user-friendly FaceTime apparatus. So if you want to visit mom, anytime she presses the button and you're visiting. So that this prevents the, you know, the germ factor of actual visitations. My mother's 95, and she uses FaceTime with, with us all the time. So it's, it's really user friendly and it's very doable. We've got operating protocols for the, for the service personnel, which can carry in germs and bacterias where their time cards are actually, they can't check in to their employment if they have a temperature. Ultraviolet mats, rooms where you can actually come and visit, but they have plastic barriers like you have here. So we've really kind of gotten ahead. We're on the cutting edge. We're affordable, we're on the cutting edge, and we're serving a big need for, for the entire population. And we're an asset to the community. On our team, we're very, very experienced. Jerry Menke is the architect from EGA, spent 30, 40 years strictly in assisted living design. Mark Lancor, our engineer, is doing all of our site planning. We have a very coordinated team. Seth Dudley is our chief operating officer and has run communities just like this. Very experienced with almost 20 years of experience in that, in that field. And our contractor is Wilson Construction, bonded to 650 million and has a huge division. That's all they do. In the division is senior housing. So we're very well situated. We have a great team. And we look forward to working with, with the city of Brockton. Thank you.
I guess if there are any questions about the design we have, or the architect, or the architect, any of the
Any question? Finished your present?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
Question? Questions from the board? Mr. Pino?
That I noticed in the design is in the, in the front entryway, there are pillars holding up three stories. Every time you turn around, you see, you're seeing in the news, someone's driving into a building. Are there any plans to put bollards around those to offer some kind of protection?
Jerry Menke, EGA Architects, yes, there are bollards. What you're seeing is concept, as opposed to the finished site.
Okay. The height of the driveway going in, under the overhead?
High enough to get a fire truck through.
Well, you know where I'm going with my question then? And a delivery truck that may come in there. We hear these horror stories about people that are driving into these things. I'm just asking if you've considered that? The height of that for trucks that will be deliveries in there? How many employees do you think there will be on any, any one shift? I'm thinking you're going to change shifts maybe three times a day. So on any one shift, I guess maybe like the day might be more than the night or whatever. Can you kind of give us an idea? How many?
Two, when you have all of your management staff there. But most of the time you're going to have between, around 10.
So overnight, there would be about 10?
Correct.
I keep forgetting to hit that mute. So overnight, there would be 10?
Sorry, seven.
Okay, so where I'm looking here is we're probably looking at 32 to 35 employee cars that change of shifts.
I probably wouldn't say 32, somewhere, probably. And then the interesting thing is where it's located, we may not have folks driving in. Some folks may be taking public transportation as well, but I'd say maximum between 20 and 25.
Okay, and the ratio that you're talking about, the packing here is 0.8?
Correct.
So you're figuring that there's going to be less than one vehicle per occupant in the building?
Correct.
Mostly because most of the occupants that are going to be there won't be driving past?
Correct.
So it would appear that most of the packing is going to be needed for the people that work in the building and visitors?
Visitors, absolutely.
What is your experience with the numbers that you're proposing tonight in other areas?
With the 55 parking spaces is definitely more than adequate. You know, we often look at around 45 to 50 to be more than adequate, so a little bit above that.
So your past experience has been that with the number of occupants in the building, that the point eight is an adequate number for employees, visitors, well?
Absolutely.
I'm going to hit on mute again. On these types of occupancies is snow removal. You got any thoughts on what you're going to do with snow removal up here? Looks like pretty much every square inch is pretty much covered here.
But we'll have the landscaping agency to help with the snow remove for sure, and then we'll do, we'll do, you know, some of it ourselves. But it'll be, it'll be pretty regular and a few, you know, a few times during the storm, somebody's going to be in there cleaning that up.
Well, I guess my question is
Where's the snow go? So we'll work with the landscaper. If we have to haul it out of there, that's what we have to do. If we find an area there that we can, you know, stack and pilot, we'll do that. You know, the ability to have a few more parking spaces, you may have to lose one of those in the winter for some snow, story per se.
My previous life, I was a heavy construction owner with 300 plowing accounts, commercial plowing accounts. Rest assured, we will have a contractor with a payloader. And typically, if you get a large storm, you, you get a payloader in there, you get a triaxle, you take out the snow, end of story.
Well, I think it's worth a discussion because what you're proposing here is to put a structure that's going to pretty much take up the whole plot. And we have that experience in the city in the past that when you get a major snowstorm, you can end up losing quarter or third of the packing places because they don't want to remove it, they just push it with hazard pack. And suddenly, your 50 spaces are suddenly down to 30. So that's why I'm bringing it up. I'd like to make sure we hear that publicly, that you're not going to anticipate losing packing places. And if we have major storms, you would anticipate removing that snow from the site?
Absolutely. Yes.
So so you can provide this wonderful service to the elderly at a 30, at 30% less cost than some of the more upscale assisted living facilities. And you call it mid-market affordable, yet you have the same amenities, fully taxable and private pay. All of this seems, seems to be very attractive or would be very attractive to to families who have elderly family members that would be willing to to place their, their relatives or loved ones in this facility. Are you trying to attract people from near and far, or are you trying to service the local community? And have you any stipulations as to who you will be servicing? You talk about fulfilling the need in the, in the area, but what stipulations do you have in your, in your mission to address?
So approximately 70% of the folks, we anticipate, like we've seen in other projects, 70% of the folks that live with us will come from the primary market area, which is about 10 mile radius here in Brockton.
I can't quite hear. What, what, what is the parameter of the market area?
About a 10 mile radius is the
10 mile radius, okay, thank you.
With, we anticipate the majority of our folks coming from right here in Brockton. In terms of stipulations on who can and cannot reside there, as long as folks can meet the medical qualifications, you know, and generally folks are going to be, our average resident's going to be around 82 and have, you know, need assistance with maybe two or three activities of daily living. That's, that's your kind of stereotypical residence. So we anticipate very similar in that facet, as long as folks can meet the medical qualifications or we can, we can handle their medical needs, look for them, reside with us.
What's the primary community that's operated, the scene, the operation?
So from a licensing perspective, Executive Office of Elder Affairs licenses the community. So they do, you know, annual or biannual inspections at the property level. And then we, we're hiring a very well-known management company, Charter Senior Living, will be managing the day-to-day operations of the community. They have multiple properties, you know, throughout the United States.
If this was granted, when do you expect that you would break ground? This year?
It'd be, it would be site plan approval process will take three, four months?
Yeah, so construction will be next year.
Next construction season?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Is it going to be a five-story building? Is that what, is it going to be five stories? And that's because you're hired to secure property from lay notice, right?
That's correct.
What's the disadvantage to, to being multi, multi-stories as opposed to being a two or three-story building on a larger space? It, it, it's, it appeared, it sounded as though you, you say, we wanted to be four, but we had to go five because we couldn't get the So is there a, is there a disadvantage to, to being, being five stories or six stories as opposed to being three?
The question, I'm sorry, I lost it.
Is there a disadvantage relative to the age, age of people and accessibility to entrance and egress for a five-story building versus a three-story building?
Okay.
The question is, is it a disadvantage?
Should we consider that a negative or?
For the public record, my name's Mark Nightcore, I'm the engineer of record, working with, with our client. To your point is that it comes down to when you look at actual cost of building construction and how one of the components of being able to bring this to a thirty percent level of cost to the market has to deal also with the number of stories. And so by having the fifth story, we're actually able to pass that savings on to the client, which is important, especially in trying to meet the middle market demand. So that's one of the primary reasons for going to the fifth story.
How many elevators in the building? Two? Two? Okay, we're all set. Mrs. King, you with us?
I'm right here.
All right, just checking.
Thank you.
Who wants to speak in favor? Up on the screen?
I think on the screen, turn it down.
If you can close that portion of the hearing, if anyone here that wants to speak in opposition?
I have one person that wants to oppose.
Mr. Chair, I have a woman who's having trouble in the meeting herself, but she's opposed, she's opposed. She believes it's way too big, no green space, and not enough parking. This is on the watch.
What was your concern again, slowly?
Way too big, no green space, not enough parking.
And the watch is too big?
Too big, not enough parking.
Re-rea, that's it, free over there. That it?
That seems to be it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're going to close, no, I'm not. You're not going to close that portion of the hearing? Is there any elected officials here that want to speak on this issue? Same, none, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. I'm going to open up for deliberations of the board. Boy, comments?
I think this is a, this is a great addition of the city of Brockton. I think with the question of size and it really, it sounds to me like the, like going to five stories, they need to do it for, for volume to maintain their price point and their, their business model. And that, that seems pretty simple to me. In that area, you already have Heights Crossing and the other facility up there in Brockton Adult Daycare, right around the corner. So it's, it's, it's an area that's attracting these type of facilities and a mid-market assisted living facility is what's, is what's needed now and will be needed even more in the future.
Okay, can you hear me now? Someday I'll learn how to run this. This originally was zoned for a conference center and it has evolved into what it has right now, which is assisted living, nursing home, hotel, professional location rather than a commercial location. There's offices, there's unique situations up there, but the health industry seems to have settled into that area. I think this will be a good addition to that location. I know that there's been problems in that location with some homeless people and things that have been going on out there that are not the best. Hopefully, this would resolve that. I feel comfortable that the presentation that we heard tonight is from some professionals that have experience in doing this in other locations. And from what I've heard tonight, I feel comfortable that they will live up to what they're telling us. I also will comment on the presentation that was given to the board. And all the documents that were given to the board prior to tonight's hearing is very, very helpful to eliminate a lot of questions the night of the hearing. So the presentation was good and the preparation coming into tonight was also exceptional. Anything else from the board? Somebody want to make a motion? So we want a second then. Mr. Leanes, second, motion has been made and seconded to grant. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Just one moment, Mr. Chair, we have a problem without a vote, remember?
Okay, we'll hold up on the vote for a second.
He's still muted. Get her, get her on the voice. Let's put on speakerphone.
I'm really amusing myself.
Good? Yeah.
I'll call them.
Yep, she's going to call the roll right now, okay? Yes, okay. All right.
Mr. Bernard? Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Wayness?
Yes.
Mr. Peanut?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Do you hear me?
Ms. Smith?
What's your vote?
What's your vote?
I'll be glad when this COVID is done.
Hello? Reese, do you know what's hanging up? What is your vote?
Say it again?
What is your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, that's five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You're picking on voicemail.
Okay, the vote is five in the affirmative, none in the negative, the petition is granted. Thank you.
Do you want to keep going this far?
Yes. Yeah, I'll try just keep it on the phone. Okay, the next petition is twenty-five three, the petition of one twenty-seven Center Corner LLC, three sixty-two Montello Street, Brockton, Mass. For a variance from section twenty-seven thirty-four, twenty-seven forty-eight, twenty-seven fifty-three, and fifty-four, and twenty-seven fifty-five. To construct a mixed-use complex with forty residential rental units and commercial space without parking or loading area in an I-two zone located at one twenty-seven Center Street.
Now, Mr. Chair and members of the zoning board of the field, your commission, my name is Frank Berg, and I have a forty-eight and one-Full Street as well. I am pleased to represent one twenty-seven Center Corner LLC.
Uh, one A group of investors have taken an interest in, in the city of Brockton. They have committed to a development and they have developed the quality of properties within the city. They're experienced and they do what they say they're going to do. Their commercial street property is right next door. We came before this board approximately a year and a half, two years ago, requesting a variance to be allowed to construct apartments at what used to be a, a state office building. That construction after the ribbon cutting was completed is fully developed. And it in fact is housing exactly who they thought would be interested in the property. Some retired, some young, a lot of transit with the MBTA in its close proximity. They purchased as part of that first project, the glass building, which was a defunct business. And in doing so, they improved their flow of in and out on the twenty-seventh Commercial Street property by allowing a, a, a shared exit to Commercial Street. And also allowed them to have a clear line of parking, which was problematic because of the, the property boundary. So in this specific project, it is their intention to construct a party unit residential complex. Again, it's going to be totally market rate, there will be no affordable component. They're already gone before the city of Brockton and the city council was gracious enough to grant an H-DIP application, so that they will be going before the state to try to secure some funds. But again, this will be solely directed towards market rate housing without any affordable component. The intent is that they would have twenty-five one-bedroom and fifteen two-bedroom units. There would be some commercial use in, in the ground floor. It's yet to be undetermined, but Darren DeCoste, who has been a leading force in this development, believes that there is a market for a commercial mixed use in the first floor and wants to maintain that. The parking relief is being requested. Again, this is a property that will have some onsite parking as evidenced by the plan. But in addition, we have reached agreement and in fact are, are right now leasing twenty-five permitted space from the MBTA or Bat Bus Garage that is roughly only approximately a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet away. So we have ample parking, even though what we were requesting relief. The, the, the project is, is, is roughly anticipated to be somewhere around seven to ten million dollars. It is going to bring great development to the city. It is a clearly an example of the urban transportation parking and, and housing, as was the Commercial Street property. And it is in fact a project that we look for your support. In addition to the parking relief and the variance for the use, they're also seeking off-street loading relief pursuant to section twenty-five, twenty-seven fifty-five. I think that this is an exceptional project. It's a project that's been endorsed by the city council. It's a project that has been consistently supported by our city planner. And we think it's another improvement in filling out the neighborhood in downtown Brockton with quality construction and quality units and making use of the, the train in the way it should be done. So I, I don't have any specific items more, be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Peanut?
What does he propose, the, the rents for
For each of a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
I, I The answer to that question, and unfortunately, Mr. Cost, has to be out of state. The answer is this, this way, that'd be great answer. The rents that they're getting next door are higher than they anticipated, they were marketing for. So not only is that project successful, it's more successful than they anticipated.
What kind of agreement you have in fact, both to this or that?
Uh, I have in fact an invoice now that I can basically, you're already renting. You're already renting. Bat parking permits for spaces one ninety-five through two nineteen, twenty-five permits at, at the ninety dollars apiece and it's paid quarterly. And we have the availability of the space and they're happy to have us.
Those twenty-five spaces, are those for seventy-five Commercial Street?
No, seventy-five Commercial Street has more spaces than they need. We, we are not cross utilizing any spaces. All the spaces that are dedicated to seventy-five Commercial Street go to seventy-five Commercial Street. All the spaces that we're identifying in our plan either are onsite or onsite plus the spaces with the Bat Bus.
Right, it was a plan that showed that there was eight spaces on seventy-five Commercial Street that pointed to go on one twenty-seven Center Street.
And I explained to them that was a lousy idea. So they picked it up by going with the twenty-five spaces at the Bat Bus Garage. So we will not be using any seventy-five Commercial Street spaces in this growth, in this project. So, so to answer the question, so there is no confusion, we don't intend to utilize any spaces at seventy-five Commercial.
How many elevators are going to be in this?
See if I can get the plan or something. I do not have the plan here, sir, I apologize. We submitted floor plans to, to the, to the board, which would show the elevator space.
And what are you anticipating for packing places?
What are you anticipating for packing in places for the commercial on Chris Wall?
Uh, yes, this is a unique situation. There, there is a loading space that is, I believe it's called fifteen-minute parking or drop-off parking of four spaces right in front of the building.
Do you have any idea how many spaces are needed for that commercial area?
In terms of what the actual use requirement is, uh, again, I apologize, without the plan, I do not.
Okay, I just was looking at square footage of commercial area at Chris Wall, trying to check how much parking is needed.
Is it five thousand square feet?
Now, looking at this plan, when you look at the front of the building on Center Street, there is going to be a tunnel, so as to speak, on the right-hand side, at the first wall over, that you would drive under in order to get to the back of the building, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the actual building on the upper floor extends towards the tracks over this tunnel area that you built.
It does, sir, yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Now, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anybody on the screen?
Nobody on the screen, Chair.
So, as well as that portion of the hearing, is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition?
No one on the screen, Chair.
Do we have somebody?
No.
Okay, I'm waiting for opposition, there's nobody coming up on the screen?
That is correct, no one on the.
On the virtual, okay. All right, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, is there any elected official that would like to speak? Counselor.
Good evening, members of the zoning board, my name is Jeff Thompson, I'm the Ward Five City Councilor. One twenty-seven Center Street, uh, it is in my ward and is in the heart of our downtown district. Brockton's been working on a downtown strategy over the past twenty years, well, over the last five years, which is a twenty-year plan. We are seeking to add residential units in our downtown to take advantage of the, our MBTA asset. We need a good mixture of affordable home, affordable housing, and also market rent. This project is one hundred percent market rent and will fit nicely in our plan for downtown. As Attorney Burke says, the city council does approve of this project, as that we have filed some requests for H-DIP funding for this project. Mr. DeCoste has shown himself to be a proven developer in Brockton. Seventy-five Commercial Street project was built within budget and on time. I had the opportunity to view that housing project, and it's high-quality, very nicely done, we expect no less of this project at one twenty-seven Center Street. This is, I believe, an industrial zone, it's zoned as an industrial zone, the hardship is obvious. We, we, there is no call for industrial use in this project that is abutted by residential uses, our police department, and the MBTA. So, I believe that's an obvious hardship that this board should grant a variance for. There was a question as to parking. We have very limited, limited parking downtown. I think the agreement that Mr. DeCoste came with the MBTA for twenty-five spaces at their lot solves that problem. This is a housing project that our city greatly needs as to its quality and, and location, so I'm asking for a favorable approval of this project, and thank you for your time tonight, Charlie.
Thank you. Any other elected official? Seeing that, and I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, I'm going to open up deliberations from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I think as a, as a member of the planning board, I, this is, this is, projects like this have been on, have been on the planning board's, planning department's radar for, for quite a while, since the development of the downtown action plan, and this, this is another key piece that fits right into that. Adding, adding market-rate housing right near the train station is a, a, a great benefit to the city.
Mr. Peanut, motion to grant, who, anybody want to make a motion to second that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Smith's seconded. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to Grant. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamis?
Yes.
Mr. Peanut?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Kevin Yeller?
No.
Mr. Chairman, it's four in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Four in the affirmative, one in the negative, the petition is granted. Okay, now are we ready?
Yeah, ready.
Next petition, twenty dash fifty-four, the petition of Partners Choice Properties LLC, eighteen Meadowbrook Drive, East Bridgewater, Mass., for a variance from section twenty-seven twenty-eight, twenty-seven ten subsection two, twenty-seven forty-eight, and twenty-seven forty-nine. Special permit to subdivide existing parcels that include an existing residential and commercial use in a C-one zone located at six sixteen Center Street.
Again, Mr. Chairman, uh, zoning board of appeals, my name is Jim Burke, attorney-at-law with offices at forty-eight North Pearl Street. I'm pleased to have Scott Farrier with me today, who's going to assist. Scott's spent a lot of time on this specific project. Essentially, we have what is the old Bonnie Glen on Center Street, and, and by history, approximately nineteen sixteen, the residential structure was built, of course, well before the zoning bylaw, and at some point, which is somewhat unclear, a, a commercial structure was, uh, annexed in the same property that is now connected basically by a deck. The assessment's office has it for, in fact, a, a, a mixed-use property in a C-one zone. I, I have submitted two forms of relief, whatever the board thinks is most appropriate, and I'll try to explain it, because I think what you have is a non-conforming use. And as part of a non-conforming use under forty-eight, the, the usual course is to have, forty-eight section six is to have a zoning board of appeals determine that any expansion in the use is not more of an impact on the surrounding area, and they can impose certain conditions if they believe it's appropriate. The second is, is, is in fact a variance for relief of, in this rather unique situation. Basically, the plan that Scott has prepared is actually an A&R plan. So, the A&R plan was approved by the planning board, which basically, you remove the, the deck, and they're looking to have two separate parcels in a C-one zone, and because they're in a C-one zone, they have sufficient area and, and sidelot requirements, but the, the difference is that you'll now have an impacted residential use that will become more non-conforming because it's smaller than was before when it was part of a combined parcel. So, that, that's a rather unique situation in terms of, of, of the development. Scott, do you want to identify that form?
Sure, it's, as Attorney Burke said, there's a deck right in the middle of the, the two buildings, roughly, it's about an eight-by-ten foot deck, half on the commercial building, half on the residential property. We're looking to remove that entirely, so there'll be no, no encroachments that way. There's parking, as it exists, admittedly not the, the best situation, but parking right off of Center Street, enough parking for the six spaces for the commercial spot, and then ample parking for, for the residential building as well.
Yes, please.
So, Lot A is a conforming structure in, in a C-one zone, but we're at a buts a residential zone, it generally requires twenty feet of setback, and there exists ten point five, but, again, towards the non-conforming use, the building's been there since nineteen sixty, and we are not expanding it in any way to impact on that residential zone. So, an unusual situation, but we'd ask the board's consideration in granting relief.
Okay, that's in the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
So, all you're doing is moving a deck, you're making them to lose.
Basically giving them the ability.
Basically giving them the ability to sell the one, the residential lot.
So, there is a legal use here in twenty-ten, and the determination, it's a mixed use. Mixed use in a C-one zone, no expansion of residential use, single-family only. The plan, the plan that I have in front of me is nineteen sixty-six, with the proposed addition of seventy by twenty-five, which is the old aluminum place. So, at the time, the house in this addition were used as one. So, it's allowed a mixed use on that property on ten thousand square feet. So, if this was to be continued used as it currently is, why do you need a special permit?
Again, I think, I think, why would you need a special permit? Because we're making, on the, the special permit, take it back, Bonnie Glen is a Form A, meets all the requirements of the zoning. Lot A, which is the house, because it, we had a combined parcel of X number of square feet, is now reduced by the land that we lost by the commercial structure being a separate parcel, so it becomes more non-conforming, that's the special permit.
So, you're saying that the Bonnie Glen building becomes more non-conforming?
No, Bonnie Glen building is exactly, meets the zoning requirements. The residential structure, because it once was on a lot that was larger, now will be on a lot that's smaller, and, and it becomes more non-conforming in terms of total use or square feet for the parcel.
But if it's continued to use that as a single-family house, and the Bonnie Glen property is considered to use as an office building, and is granted mixed use with office building and single-family house, why can't you continue to do that?
You could, except it's the intent of the, the developers and, and owners to separate the two, so that you'd have one legal lot in the C-one, the commercial, and then have a residential structure in, in two separate forms of ownership.
So, we're not looking for special permit tonight, we're looking for a variance?
Well, I, I, I'll accept whatever the board will give us, but I'm pointing out that this is a pretty unique situation, because you could take the position that under forty-eight section six, you don't have to do anything with Lot B, it's legitimate the way it is, but with Lot A, it becomes more non-conforming, and if you did, it would be a special permit that you would grant. However, as I said in the alternative use, I can understand the board's moving to grant the variance because it's more conventional.
A variance for residential use in a, in a, so the problem here is this existing house would be on lots on thirty-six hundred square feet.
That would be correct.
And where is the parking for those?
Both in front, Mr. Chairman, and on the side, there's a driveway on the.
Where are those at?
Just to the left of the front door is two parking spaces.
And those are existing.
Right, that's what's used now.
Is that a seventeen point two feet?
Yes.
That's to the house, that doesn't even consider the steps on the bump off in front of the house?
Right, the, the parking's on, on that side, to the side of the house, this parking area, not directly in front of the house, or in front of the steps, but just to the left of that bump off.
So, you're saying it's between the house and Front Street?
Exactly, the front-left corner of the house and Front Street. Exactly, the front-left corner of the house and Prince Street.
And that's less than 17 feet?
Right.
Oh.
And then the parking in the back off of Prince Street, behind the house, another set of stairs on the...
And here in the back, there is a right-of-way for Lot B? This came before us once before, when the owner of the aluminum company stood before us and was very concerned about maintaining that right-of-way off of Prince Street to get access to his building. So obviously, if that's a right-of-way for Lot B, you're seeing parking that right-of-way. So the petition here doesn't want to use both buildings in conjunction with each other, that's the bottom line?
That's correct.
So the desire is to split this lot. Is this lot split now, or is it all one lot?
All one lot.
It's all one lot, that's what I thought.
Because we haven't recorded the A&R plan.
Correct. So what you're showing us tonight is two separate lots, when in fact, it's all one lot. And when they granted permission to build this building at 616 Center Street, the building that was to be built, which is now built, was to be used in conjunction with the house. The original plan shows the two were going to be connected. Over the years, a porch of some type was built, and the enclosure was built or taken down, but it's not there now.
Right, it's just a deck.
So if this was granted, what's the separation between the commercial building and the proposed new lot line? Is that four feet?
It's four feet from the commercial building to that lot line, five point two feet from the residential building to that one.
So there's only nine feet between the two buildings?
Correct.
So are we agreeing here that we're talking about granting a variance?
We're talking about, I guess, granting a new variance. Because it stands now, Lot B doesn't require any relief under our zoning bylaw if we recorded the A&R plan.
Correct. But you're going to need a variance to put that house on 3600 square foot lot?
Or a...
Except that in the C1 zone, there is no minimum lot area.
So it's a house?
It's a residential use, and then again, in a C1 zone, so it's...
So you need a variance to allow that single-family house to remain in a C1 zone?
That's it, exactly.
So no matter what we do here, it's going to be a variance.
And then the side yards, that way.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Just thinking, it's very interesting what we're dealing with, dealing with issues that were created 100 years ago.
Absolutely.
With construction buildings and very non-conforming areas.
I didn't hear that question. Can you just tell?
I just think it's, I think I'm so muted. Am I muted? I can't understand it. What are you saying?
Okay.
Speak up, Rob. Yeah, this is just another issue in the city. We have a lot of properties that were built 100 years ago, and while it was zoning, and I believe that you just have to deal with these as they come along. Is there any, other than separated properties, say for sale of the residential property, there's no other plans to do anything with it?
No, there is not.
There's really nothing else that could be done at this point.
So forgive me if I feel like yelling. Did you hear that?
The problem is that it's a lay... This house is determined to be a single-family house.
Yes, yes.
What else? Okay, we heard you. I'm going to open this up for public discussion. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Seeing, I'm going to close that portion of hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition? I'm going to close that portion of hearing, and I'm going to open it up to discussion from the board.
As I've mentioned before, we're basically handling the cards that we've dealt here. There's nothing, they're not asking to do anything additional to the property, they're just separating the buildings. I don't see that there's much circumstance that we could be against this.
We have a discussion. So on the question of whether it's a special permit or a variance, I think a motion to grant a variance, I'm going to ask for a motion. And I think we should put a stipulation that a house shall remain as a single-family house.
Correct.
So... Who has a motion? Ms. Pina, who wants to second?
Second, no, second. Second, so let me see.
Motion's for Navy Second to Grant. Mr. Poythor, please go ahead and roll.
Mr. Bernard? Are we going across the side of the park? So, excuse me, there's been a motion made to grant? There's been a motion made to grant and to be seconded, yes. And then you're asking in favor? No. If you vote yes, you're in favor behind. I do not wish to add to this. No. No? I can't hear you. Okay. Mr. Bernard, you're not? Mr. Lennis?
Yes.
Mr. Pina?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Chairman Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Chair, it's two in the affirmative, three in the negative.
Two in the affirmative, three in the negative, the petition is denied.
All right, the next petition.
One second, I just want to make sure Mr. Plaji's on.
I'm on.
Yes, I'm on. Are you on?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to call you Andrea for the night.
Well, I've been called worse. All right, Mr. Bernard is going to recuse himself from this vote. Can you hear me now?
Mr. Bernard, do you have to leave the room?
Yeah, just have to step outside.
You can step into the...
None of us do. All right, Mr. Bernard is going to recuse himself from this case and acting in his stead as our alternate member, Blaji. Member Blaji. Ready? Okay. The next petition is 20-55, the petition of New Heights Charter School of Brockton, 1690 Main Street, Brockton asked for a variance for Section 2753 Subsection 3, 2754, to allow temporary tents and shelters required as a result of the COVID crisis in a C2 zone located at 1690 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Appeals, Attorney Burke again. A pleasure of representing New Heights. I was just before the board and was pleased that the board, in its consideration, granted us a variance to allow the parking determination based on the model that the board had set up a couple of years ago. Just as we were in the process of finishing that variance, I got a call from Omar Mari Walker from New Heights indicating that he had just received the instructions from the Department of Education as to what the requirements were going to be for school openings for 2020. And those requirements included various open areas that required tents. It's the determination of the Department of Education that fresh air locations are required for students periodically during the day outside of the classroom. In addition, because of the distancing requirements, they were required to take up just about every usable space, so the teachers lost offices, which resulted in Holmgren's and Scott Farrier's office drawing up proposals for temporary tents and trailers to get them through this COVID crisis. So it was an emergency filing, and go ahead, Scott, if you want to identify exactly what we're doing.
So as Attorney Burke said, most of the site remains the same, just a few quick things ago with the tents that we're proposing.
Excuse me?
Yep.
I'm sorry. The members are on remote, cannot hear you.
I should go this way. You can just leave that. Thank you. So the two tents that we're proposing are up on the northern side of the property, so we have the two tents in that location. We eliminated a whole row of parking, both up against that property line and the row closest to it, to accommodate the tents. We've also placed a row of Jersey barriers up against those tents, just to make sure there would be no vehicular mishaps at all in that location. In moving, in placing the tents in those locations, in putting the Jersey barriers there, it's eliminated 26 parking spaces from what you had previously approved last month. So that gets us down below what was required. We had, I forget now, I'll grab my plan, we had a few extra spaces last time, so this gets us down, the requirement was 269 spaces, this gets us down to 253, so it gets us 16 spaces below what we've deemed to be required at the last Board of Appeals meeting. As Attorney Burke said, we've got three trailers proposed on the site, two right on the side of the building where there's an existing loading dock, and then one behind the building, kind of on the, I guess, the southwestern side of the property, and that one will be used for the teacher's room because they've lost their teacher's room. So there'll be a trail for the teacher's room, and then two trailers for additional classroom space. And also, what I've highlighted in blue on this plan is just a pedestrian walkway that we've placed on the plan just to get the kids safely from the front of the building, out the door, and over to the tent area. So as we've said in the past, I think we've always had plenty of parking, we've come up with what we needed for zoning, but realistically, when you go out there, there's always plenty of parking out there. So at this point, under the current circumstances, we think we're doing about as best we can with it.
We are, yes.
So basically, what you're asking for us tonight is to, once again, determine the appropriate number of parking places that are going to be needed for this configuration.
Correct, correct.
The way I understand it, you gave us a parking layout of 279 last time.
Yes.
I was figuring it came out that you needed at least 269.
Right.
So you had some extra.
Exactly.
When we put all the numbers together, we come down to 253 spaces.
That's correct.
And we're eight spaces short.
I think the math is right, yes.
It gets confusing, but I think it went right.
Right.
All right, so just as a comment, you need 269 by the formula that we used.
Yes.
You're now down to 253.
Correct.
And you're asking for a number of at least 253.
Correct, yes.
Right? So my thought is if we reduce it to a number somewhat below 253, to allow a little bit of wiggle room, but in the proposal that was put forth to us, they're looking for about 206 spaces, because they're going to split up the students, they won't have all students there at the same time. I'm just taking a comment, I'm not comfortable lowering the number to that number, because if we do, anything can happen down there, down to that number.
Sure.
So I'm going to propose a number and a stipulation that this number that we come to tonight will only be valid in this school year, the 2021 season. At that point, the extinguisher itself goes back to 269. Is that what you're looking for?
That would work.
Yes.
Thank you, that would work.
Okay. Board, deliberation, any questions there? Okay. We're remote, anybody got any questions? Ms. Smith? Good? And Mr. Plaji?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? All right, we're going to close that portion of the hearing, and someone here that wants to speak in opposition. I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, and then we'll open up deliberations to the board. I am going to make a suggestion, and we can ask her around, but they need at least 253 on this request as before. I'm going to make a suggestion that we lower that number, at least five to six more spaces, which will get us down to around 2.7, 2.8. It gives a little bit of wiggle room, it takes something up. I'll throw down for deliberation. I think that makes sense. We know that the...
We, we, we know that they, you generally have plenty of parking now. And we have a form mode that we use that has, we have the required spaces. So I think, I think that that number works fine, especially if this extinguisher comes up at the end of the 2021 school year. I'm just ensuring that if the regulations that they're working on now come off second gear, and they could go back to seven hundred students, and yet they only need 203 parking places, we've lost control of parking. That is the whole purpose of the company before us, because we really want to be fair to the customers, right?
Exactly.
So at least this point here, we as a board can have control over the number of spaces, but yet a lot of them can't be moved along that number. So that's my opinion. So I'm looking at the number up. 2.7. That works?
Worked.
All right. I would propose that that we allow them not less than 247 onsite parking places as an amendment to the original 269. And this amended number that we will come to agree on will only be valid during the 2021 school year. At the end of the 21 school year, it goes back to the 269. Correct? All right, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to grant.
All right, so one more, then we should definitely be the second. Go back to the second. Three seconds, okay. So the motion has been made in second to grant a temporary reprieve to 247 parking spaces until the end of the 2021 school year, at which time we'll go back to the 269. This point please go ahead and roll. Mr. Plogge?
Yes.
Mr. Lainis?
Yes.
Mr. Pina?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Chairman Gallagher?
Yes.
The chair has five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Why do you affirm with none and negative is granted?
Thank you for your time.
Good night.